I'd like to call this meeting of the County Board of Commissioners to order.
Chris, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. McConnell.
Here.
Mr. Heidemann.
Here.
Mr. Bone. Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Rushing.
Here.
Mr. Greatot.
Here.
Commissioner Tamian.
Please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to this evening's agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens out here in our vast audience that like to approach the podium? Seeing none, are there any updates? Conceptual initiatives from the administration?
No.
Old business. New business. Our first item is a board of health appointment.
Mr. Chair, I would move the appointment of Arnold Kuntz to be sent to the full board for approval.
Support. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Greatot.
I just want to say, I think this is the last person, if I'm not mistaken, to be appointed. They've been looking for a long time. They have a relatively small board, and they've had a few occasions where they didn't have a quorum, and so filling this position for them is a very good thing, so, good move.
I think that our candidate is very well qualified and fits in with having expertise in areas that the health departments got several initiatives pending. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we have one of two items from our library. The first one is an equipment lease for applied imaging.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we send this on to the full board.
Support.
And the amount of that is $16,538.46 for 39 months. Cost remaining for fiscal 2016 is $2,838. Is that the one we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Excellent.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
The second item that we have is the maintenance agreement for applied imaging, also at the library.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we send this to full board.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other human services matters to come before our committee this evening? Seeing none, information only, we have the health department, May 2016, points of interest.
Mr. Chair, I move that we receive and file the health department's 2016 points of interest.
Did we get a second?
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Receive and file packets?
I move we receive and file packets.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. I think so. I've been going through almost every meeting, turning together directions. I know where to turn next. I don't always show up.
We'll call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners. No, we're not going to open this meeting yet. We go right into, we're going to have a public hearing for the fiscal year 2016 Edward Byron Memorial Justice Program. And we open this meeting, what, at 6:05? And there's no one here, is there anybody here with any comments?
Say it three times.
Yeah, three times.
Is there anyone here for the public hearing for the Edward Byron Memorial Justice Program? Is there anyone here for the public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. We will open the Judiciary, Public and Safety Committee meeting. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tamian.
Here.
Mr. Heidemann.
Here.
Mr. Bone. Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Rushing.
Here.
Mr. Greatot.
Here.
Mr. McConnell.
Here. Any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of agenda as presented.
We have an addition.
We have an addition.
We have an addition.
A.
I move that we take 2A, the addition that's listed, and list it down to 7E under new business.
Support.
We have motion to support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
We have motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Are there any citizens to be heard? Seeing none, any updates? Conceptual initiatives?
No.
Any old business? Moving to new business. 2017 to 21 Corporate Reimbursement Program application, front of the court.
Make motion to forward that to the full board.
Support.
We have motion in support. Is there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 2017 Community Corrections Plan.
Mr. Chairman, I- Make the motion to move it to full board. Support.
We have motion in support. If there's any question, Jerry's here.
Just want to point out, we did, for the next fiscal year, we did request an additional $56,000. For the current year, we were able to get a mid-year adjustment where the state added $30,000, and so it's kind of consistent with that. You may recall, a few years ago, they did cut our budget by about $60,000 when times were bad, so hopefully this will help us restore the balance.
Thank you. Jerry runs a very good meeting because he provided food and it brought everybody to quick attention. Thank you. So we have motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C, the 2016 Edward Byron Memorial Justice Program.
Mr. Chair, I move that this item be forwarded to the board, the full board for action. Second.
We have motion in support. Any questions?
Just to note that it is all federal funds with no matching grant.
Correct, 100 percent.
Good, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D, the 2016 Marine Safety Program Grant Agreement.
I move that the 2016 Marine Safety Program Grant Agreement be sent to the full board for final approval.
Support.
We have motion in support. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Just a comment, if you look at the figures posted there, going back to '09, you'll see that $230,000 for a couple of years running, and then some cuts, and then cuts all the way down the line until this year, seems to be a slight uptick again. And if I'm not mistaken, Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a formula in there wherein the state gives you just a percentage of what you spent the year before that, which tends to bring that number down every year. Does it work, something like that?
That is how the formula goes. What we've done the past few years, though, is even though the grant has been reduced, we've kept up the county's funding piece, so we're actually over-matching this grant to keep their funding up to help stop that erosion.
So as this thing was spiraling down, because we were spending less and less every year, and you got to spend a percentage of that less amount by us general funding more of it, that pushed that figure back up, and so their formula was working on a higher figure than...
Yes.
All right. That's the only way we can get that back up, then, is to...
It is based on prior spending.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Did we do the...
Yes.
This is done.
We still need to-
Motion in support, all in favor?
We have to do that.
Aye.
Aye.
We did.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. Item E is going to be the 2017 to 21 Cooperative Reimbursement Program application.
I move that this item be forwarded to the full board. Support.
We have motion in support. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any other judicial, public safety matters at this time? Seeing none. Information only, we received Senator Pavlo's legislative updates.
Make a motion to receive and file Senator Pavlo's legislative update.
Support.
We have motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion to receive and file.
So moved. Support.
We have motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Move, we adjourn.
Support.
Done, thank you. Howard, are you up next?
Yep, I'm up next. We're keeping on this end for a while. I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the roll?
Mr. McConnell.
Here.
Mr. Tamian.
Here.
Mr. Bone. Mr. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Rushing.
Here.
Mr. Greatot.
Here.
Mr. Heidemann.
Here. Any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Make motion we approve the agenda as presented.
Yeah, we got a deletion.
Got a deletion.
Got a deletion under updates.
Yeah, I would make a motion that item A, where it says delete real-time source water early warning system, John Jones, let that be deleted from the agenda.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Make motion to accept the amended agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Conceptual initiative, any updates from commissioners regarding environmental or public works matters? Seeing none? Any conceptual initiatives from administration?
No.
None from administration, no old business, we'll go to new business. The Columbus Launch Generator Hookup. We have Mark Burchew here, director from Park and Rec. If you have any questions. Just a comment, that facility down there is completely dependent on electricity to run the heating and the air conditioning, and it is heated and air-conditioned by geothermal techniques, so it's not something we want to let go down, especially in the wintertime. And I think it behooves us to at least put in a hookup so we can run that generator over and hook it up. And right now, that generator has been sitting around for I don't know how long, and if we needed an emergency, it's there. But we need to be able to hook it up to power the place so we can run that geothermal system. Any questions for Mark? Commissioner Greatot.
Mark, the price that we've got here, is this strictly labor and the pieces to do the wiring? This does not include a generator. This is hooking up so that we can use our existing generator.
Right, this is a dedicated plug-in station with a throw switch that connects to the generator while it disconnects from the electrical grid.
And that generator is stored offsite?
That's currently stored at the Sheriff Department, hasn't been used for years. They would be happy to let us store it at Columbus and their white barn there.
Commissioner Dunn. Mark, was there any comment by any of the other contractors why they did not bid on this project?
I don't know, it's, we've put the burden on them to design and build.
Ah, okay.
And B&amp;T, because we couldn't get our local electrical engineer to give us plans, so obviously B&amp;T, who had wired the building for the construction, felt comfortable with that. We think that was the reason why.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mark. That's all.
Okay, seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. We'll take that up at the regular board meeting. The St. Clair County Master Plan Update Authorization to Distribute the Draft Plan. I see people from Metropolitan Planning here.
All right, good evening, I'm Lindsay Wallace, I'm senior planner at the Metropolitan Planning Commission. I'm going to do the first half of the slide, and then Jeff Donaldson will take over for the second half. So we're basically, and the reason we're here this evening is to request the VOC authorization to distribute the draft master plan for the 63-day review and comment period. What is the county master plan? Well, basically, it's a long-term vision for the county. It's a policy document that guides growth, change, and development, and it's the basis for all planning in the county. So this is just a quick slide. The last plan was adopted in 2009, so now it's time for a new one, and we'll explain a little bit later about how this document is different and what it includes. So all of our county planning efforts are all done in conjunction with this county master plan. All the documents share similar goals, objectives, and actions. To name a few is our rec plan, our long-range transportation plan, our CIP, and all the other county planning efforts, the Blue Ways, the infrastructure, library, health department, as well as state and regional plans such as Blue Means Green, the Regional Transportation Plan at SEMCOG, and all of their green infrastructure plans and prosperity plans.
Lindsay, before you jump off that page, I noticed that a couple of those plans are going out four years, but the transportation was all the way to 2040. Is there a reason why that one goes so far out?
That is a 25-year plan. It's, that's based on federal highway requirements.
So we don't do a four-year plan on transportation here?
We have a, we have a Transportation Improvement Program, which is four-year financial document for all the projects.
Okay.
So that's a more concise planning document, but it comes from the-
This one is 25 years, and this works with the state of Michigan, SEMCOG, everybody else, all kind of working?
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep. And then, as part of the planning process, we had a public participation portion to gather public input. When it started, we'd had a joint VOC-MPC meeting, and then we had an online forum called Idea Scale. There was 100 users, they all, they put in 35 ideas, and people voted and commented on those ideas. We also did some onsite public outreach at farmers' markets and libraries, so we got some great public input as we, as we developed this plan.
Well, thank you, Lindsay, and as Lindsay referenced, I'm going to get a little bit into what's included in this plan. So really, what's different with this plan from 2009? And Lindsay touched a little bit upon this, we really tried to integrate the findings of Blue Means Green and align with SEMCOG and Region 6's planning efforts. Region 6, you might recall, came before this board with their Accelerate Plan. SEMCOG recently updated their plan, as well as, they also recently updated their economic development strategy as well. So we took a look at those documents and closely tried to align it, and I'll talk a little bit further about that as we go forward. The alignment that I just referenced, it's reflective of the five guiding principles you see on this slide here. And these five guiding principles set the framework for the 20 planning goals listed in the Goals Matrix that everybody should have received in your packet. We looked at our last couple dot planning documents, in 2000, back in 2000, we put together our master plan. It was a, it was a big effort, we hadn't updated the county's master plan in several decades. Planning statutes had changed, requiring a more expeditious amendment schedule, if you will, with planning documents, both at county and local government levels. And we, that was a big undertaking. We had several consultants involved, we had, each chapter had a technical report that was this thick, and that document really kind of brought the county in, into the 20th century, 21st century, in terms of capturing all the information that we've had, putting all, from all the different categories that were addressed in there, economic development, environmental, transportation, et cetera, putting it all in one place, having a good place to go to it. But what we realized is, when you have a stack of papers this big, it winds up being a stack of papers this big, and not, not much further. It's used for reference, but it doesn't really become a document that's utilized throughout, throughout our community. So it was refined back in 2009 to be a smaller summary document, and there were still quite a few goals and objectives listed throughout that document. The Goals Matrix that you had distributed to you in your packets, that's part of this draft plan update, really reflects a concentrated effort on trying to get one snapshot, one vision, one place where somebody can go to and say, what are the goals for the county? How does it relate to the different areas that we're involved in, whether it's, like I mentioned, economic development, transportation, our environment, et cetera. So that's really some of the major changes that we've seen with this plan. Here's the Goals Matrix that you have in your packet, those five guiding principles are listed down along the left-hand side, and the 20 plans, or 20 goals range out from there, so each of, each of the four goals for each guiding principle follow along the band there. So it's really a clear way of understanding what the vision is set forth here in this draft plan. So what else has changed? Our 2000 plan update was the county's first planning effort in several decades, as we mentioned. We were coming off a period, or actually in the midst of a period of strong economic growth and community growth, and that plan had a strong focus on growth management at the time. That focus was refined somewhat in 2009, when we undertook our region's first comprehensive assessment of developed and undeveloped lands. We've never had anything like that at the county level. We never took a look at using GIS, because GIS was just coming out of its infancy. What we have is as far as an inventory of developed and undeveloped lands throughout our community and our region. And we took a look at that, and you can see, there's a, there's a change there, there's a lot less color, if you will, as you move to the right-hand side of the 2009 vision-based policy, and, and I think you could almost say it was a lot less managed, if you will, vision, and it took a little bit more look at efficiency of land, land development, and I'll talk a little bit further about how that's refined in 24, this current draft update. So that being said, here's the draft updated vision-based policy, we refer to as Vision 2045, and this further refines the vision that was laid out in 2009, and it has a, I would say, a nod towards downtown revitalization and efficient use of land. What we really wanted to do is take a strong look at where our urban and general services are, water, sewer, other types of services like that, where we have existing infrastructure, and, and have a vision for where we, where that, where growth would be favored in those kind of areas, because that's efficient growth. We know that when we go beyond that, there's a cost assessed with expanding the necessary infrastructure to support that growth, whether it happens then or it happens later. We know paying for our aging infrastructure, that perhaps making, taking a look at efficient use of land can help address that going forward for future generations as well. So that's what we're really looking at here. It's not, it's not hard lines set in stone, but it's a vision and it's a guiding principle. And that comes into play when grants are being sought, economic development support is being sought from the state, from the feds on projects. They look to the county for a vision that's laid out, and if we have something like this that supports the asks that we put forward, when we go and look for support, or leveraging, or funding for some projects that are coming our way, so they can say that, oh geez, it's not just happening piecemeal, there's a real vision going out here. Oops, jumped ahead. So what are the next steps? As you can see, we're here this evening, we're going to be asking this board to approve to distribute the draft master plan for a 63-day local review and comment period, that's set by a state statute. During that review and public period, we'll schedule one public open house on the plan. There'll be revisions based on the input received during that process, we'll have a public hearing on the proposed plan, then you'll go back to the Metropolitan Planning Commission for adoption, and, or recommendation for adoption to this board, and finally approved by this board at the end of, sometime near the end, shortly after the end of that 63-day local review and comment period. During the public comment period, the draft plan will be distributed to local units of government, posted on our website, as well as our CIS website, our Community Information Systems website, and available for viewing in our office. So lastly, we're here, as we mentioned this evening, to ask the-
Do we have any questions for Lindsay or Jeffrey?
We've got 63-day review, pretty familiar with the township, how they do it. They're going to distribute it to 31 communities within St. Clair County, with their review?
Yes.
Or is it going to any other counties, Jeffrey?
Yes, we will, it'll be, thank you for asking it. It will be shared with all contiguous counties, so McComb, San Lake, we're here.
Any other questions?
Just sort of an overview, what major changes in goals do we see in this plan versus the one that's currently in place?
Well, it's, we've, like I mentioned, some of the goals that are listed that have more of a regional perspective in the Region 6 Accelerate Plan are reflected here. We've looked at some of the goals in SEMCOG, and then we've strengthened the language in the goals about efficient use of our land, of our existing infrastructure. And really, that ties back to looking at some of the costs, cost burdens that come on some of our communities over the past decade with having to update aging infrastructure. Looking forward, we want to make sure if we're making land use decisions, we're doing it in the most efficient way possible, and, and, and taking advantage of and leveraging the resources we have and, and the infrastructure that we have. So I would say those are where you're going to see most of the major changes, significant changes from the past goals, from the past plan.
So it would be a reduction in sprawl?
That could, that, that would, that could be a result, yes. As I mentioned, it's not, there's no hard line drawn in the sand. This plan doesn't say development cannot occur beyond this line, but it encourages development to occur in areas where it's better supported.
So many counties, communities have plans that end up being developer-driven instead of planning-driven. How do we keep that from happening here?
Well, everybody has input during the public review period and comment period, and I would say just the fact, mere fact that we are looking at efficient use of our land, and the draft in its format as of right now speaks towards that, and speaks towards being efficient with our land use decisions. I think that, in my opinion, I believe that sends a strong message out to the development community that piecemeal development, while it certainly can't be prohibited, it's not encouraged, more efficient development is encouraged.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Rockstein.
Yeah, as far as the master plan, every community, the legal requirement, what is the legal requirement, because I've got two questions, the legal requirement for the county to have a master plan and also all our municipalities? Everybody has to have one. What is the legal requirement for updating in that? Is there a penalty?
Five years. Every five years, a plan needs to be updated, redone, looked at, some, some sort of, some sort of formal review needs to take place. And in some communities, we've helped communities where that's just quite simply updating some of the data.
Right, currently, you just finished the one-up-the-riding township, and that's going to be going through, and it's going to get distributed here from the, go through the planning commission, and it will go to the full board.
Any other questions? I would just make a couple observations. We all know that to do your own individual plans for your community, that's up to the township or the city, not up to us. We can kind of say, you know, let's do brownfield development first, and then greenfield development second. I think we can encourage that, but the local communities do control their planning, and that's just the way it is in Michigan. But I think we can kind of say, it'd be nice if you guys could go this- But I think we can kind of say, it'd be nice if you guys go this direction, you know, but that's about as far as I think we can go.
Yeah, well, and just, if you don't mind, I, I'd comment on that, as you know, um, having been involved with the Metropolitan Planning Commission for several years, the county doesn't do zoning, the county does create a, a plan, local communities do zoning in St. Clair County. Um, that's, as, wasn't always the case, the county was involved in zoning many, many years ago, but no longer, county's not involved in zoning. But when rezonings occur at the local level, one of the things locally, the local, uh, community does is takes a look at how that, that proposed rezoning is consistent with the regional vision that's spelled out in the county master plan. And furthermore, when those rezonings occur, they don't come to us for approval or disapproval, but we have a writer review, and what we find is those comments are, uh, that are, that are usually developed by staff and shared by planning commissioners back to the community, are taken quite seriously, um, planning and zoning is really, when you get right down to it, it's a risk-management document, it's, it's something you, uh, communities put in place to back up their decision-making so that if they're challenged on it, they can put, point to something and say, no, it's based on a vision, it's based on a well-thought-out set of ideas, and it's supported not just locally, but by a greater region, and, and, uh, and, yes, you're, you're absolutely correct. The, the county's master plan, um, the local plans really are the backbones of the development, but the county master plan, I would say is the framework of it.
Any other comments? I would entertain a motion at this time to authorize the distribution of the draft plan.
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner McConnell, and seconded by Commissioner Dunn. Yes?
Is this for final action tonight?
No.
You distribute, or you're gonna forward it to the full board?
Forward to the full board. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Hearing none, motion carried. Uh, we have a, uh, the Smiths Creek, uh, landfill activities report, I would entertain a mo, uh, thank you, Lindsay and Jeffrey, I'm sorry. Um, uh, we have a, uh, the activities report, I would entertain a motion to receive and file.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Uh, any other environmental or public works matters to be brought for this body? Seeing none, we'll go on to information only, we have, uh, information from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Regional Initiative Team, and also the, uh, Park and Rec Financial Documents for you, uh, for your viewing pleasure. I would entertain a motion to receive and file those.
So moved. Support.
Been moved and supported, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Receive and file packets?
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Move, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order, and I have a roll call, please.
Mr. McConnell?
Here.
Mr. Tamiyan?
Here.
Mr. Heideman?
Here.
Mr. Bone? Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Mr. Greata?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed, moving on to citizens to be heard, do we have any citizens which can be heard? Seeing none, we will move on to updates, we have any updates? Seeing none, conceptual initiatives? We have none, old business, we have none, move on to new business, seven A, Resolution sixteen dash seventeen, summer tax levy for final action.
I move that we approve the, uh, summer tax levy?
Second?
As presented?
Any discussion? All in, oh, question.
Um, I guess I'm probably gonna have to direct this at administration, um, unless somebody else can answer it, but can I get a, a little bit of an explanation going across that line? You know, the original millage is five point seven seven, uh, a reduction of one, I mean, what, what does that all mean? How does that come together?
Um, what the original millage, the five point seven seven, that was the county's original authorized millage. If you look at the second column there, that's what was levied, our millage rate for two thousand fifteen. The difference between the two of those has been headley rollbacks over the years, since the headley was adopted. And you can see column six, a millage factor of one, means we don't have a rollback this year. So if for whatever reason, we were gonna have a rollback of our millage, that would say like point nine eight, which means that we could levy nine-eight percent of our prior millage.
This is gonna sound like a silly question, a headley rollback, is there such a thing as a headley?
Roll-up?
Roll-up?
No, no such thing.
The only way you get that is by a vote of the people?
The only way we can get a headley roll-up is, is by appro, approval of the voters.
Alright, so. So when you lose it, it's gone?
Yes, forever without a vote.
Unless the voters want to give it back to you.
Thank you. It, it's kind of interesting, pardon me, it's kind of interesting, because we heard tonight how, you know, the expenses continue to go up for county government for operations, and yet, you know, we have to continually roll it back. And at some point, I, I don't know when, but at some point, it's just not going to work. And it's not only for counties, but for cities and townships, too.
Any further discussion? Uh, we don't need a roll call for this, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed, moving on to seven B, two thousand sixteen travel meeting schedule, and that is also a final action.
I move we approve the proposed travel schedule.
I have a second.
Second?
Any discussion?
This is for final action?
Yes.
This is a long way to go, if you live in certain parts of the county.
Well, I was gonna-
From my house, probably-
I was gonna ask why we're not going to Burgeville.
Next meeting will be on the schedule as Riley Township on June sixteen.
I'm probably gonna vote no on this one.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Alright, get time.
Mileage, and I have to go further than I have to go, that's alright.
This time, do we have any other Ways and Means Matters? Seeing none, we have no information only.
Motion to receive and file? Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Support.
All in favor, to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? We stand adjourned.